Hello and welcome to Represent NYC Election Coverage. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the Democratic primary for City Council District 1, which includes parts of Lower Manhattan, such as some or all of Battery Park City, Chinatown, the financial district, the Lower East Side, NoHo, SoHo, South Street Seaport, and more. I will soon introduce you to nine, yes, nine, Democrats competing in the primary, the vote for which will occur in June, who are here with us for today's debate. This race is part of the 2021 New York City election cycle, which is well underway and poised to be the most significant municipal election in decades. All of city government is on the ballot, and because so few incumbents are eligible to run for their current seats due to term limits, New Yorkers are electing many new office holders and the next roster of leadership for our city. There will be a new mayor of New York City elected here in 2021, as well as a new city controller, several new borough presidents, and many new city council members, including a new representative for District 1. And that's not all that's on the ballot. Some incumbents are eligible for and seeking reelection, including the city's public advocate, and there's a very crowded and competitive race for Manhattan District Attorney and more. Party primaries are set for June, and the general election in the fall will culminate on November 2. This is the first full set of city elections that will feature both an early voting period and the new ranked choice voting system. Now, ranked choice voting only applies to party primary elections and special elections, and we have a separate ranked choice voting show that you should find and watch. But ranked choice voting is at play in this primary for City Council District 1, and so you should know how to use it. Now, this city election cycle would be of enormous importance under even more usual circumstances, but it's obviously unfolding at a time of crisis for our city, and that raises the stakes of the election and the choices that you, the voter, will make. This next wave of city leadership will quite clearly make or break the city's recovery from the devastation of the COVID-19 pandemic and its many impacts on health, families, jobs, education, housing, and much more. A great deal of the pandemic's impact has been felt in this various city council district, and we'll be getting into that with the candidates. There, of course, were a number of crises facing the city even before COVID hit, and those need to be addressed as well. So it's an important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you many individual interviews with candidates for citywide and borough-wide offices, so find those, as well as these city council debates. We hope this and other debates and interviews will help you sort through your many choices and make informed decisions when it's time to vote, first in those June primaries. So let's get to today's debate among candidates for city council, a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem solving, legislating, budgeting, making land use decisions, and much more. Joining me now by Zoom are nine Democratic candidates for City Council District 1 in Manhattan: Susan Damplo, Sean Hayes, Susan Lee, Gigi Lee, Jenny Lo, Maude Marin, Christopher Marte, Denny Salas, and Tiffany Wimbush. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. Briefly, the rules of the debate that you've all been made aware of beforehand. No opening statements. We'll get right into the rounds of questions, although the first question prompts you for a bit of an opening statement of sorts. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer each question. I might ask you some clarifying questions at the end of your time. That's not a new minute and a half, but it's a chance to just provide a little bit more information or clarity. Don't be shocked if I jump in to ask you to explain something or for a short additional exchange. If somebody disagrees with someone else or name-check somebody, I will come around to that person for a quick response. It might not be right away, but you'll get a chance to rebut or respond. And if for some reason I don't, you can take the first few seconds of your next chance to speak, to address what's been said about you or whatever might have happened in the course of the debate. As we get towards the end of our hour and a half together, there'll be a brief lightning round of yes, no, or short-answer questions, and then we will get into one-minute closing statements. All right, let's get started here. I'm going to alternate who starts each round of questioning, but the order will always be the same in alphabetical order by last name for the sake of simplicity. So for this question, we're starting with Susan Damplo, and then she'll be followed in the same order I introduced everybody: Susan Damplo, Sean Hayes, Susan Lee, Gigi Lee, Jenny Lo, Maude Marin, Christopher Marte, Denny Salas, and Tiffany Wimbush. And don't worry, Tiffany, you'll have a chance to start a round at a different point, and everybody, we're going to work our way around. All right? So the first question is this: What specific qualifications can you cite that prepare you to become a city council member? And what specific accomplishments in public service can you cite to tell voters that you have the type of focus they should put into the city council? Susan, what qualifications can you cite that prepare you to be a city council member? And what have you accomplished in public service that voters should know about? Go ahead.
Good morning, Ben. Thank you to MNN, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all my colleagues participating on the debate today, and to your listeners. I'm qualified, most qualified, based on my life skills and experience. I've been an attorney for over three decades, and most recently, I was a state administrative law judge. I'm a former member of the Union New York State Public Employees Federation. In terms of my accomplishments, I have been a healer throughout my career. I began in the House of Representatives in the Committee on Education and Labor as a fellow working under the Civil Rights Council. There, we worked on legislation to solve a problem that had been created by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, where the statute of limitations had expired on thousands of age discrimination claimants. We created legislation that allowed that statute of limitations to extend. Then I went to work for the ACLU on the Civil Rights Act of 1991. I was one of the advocates who drafted the legislation and lobbied the members of Congress, along with a coalition of civil rights organizations, to get that bill passed. I have been working at the state level as well on issues of age in the state constitution. I have worked to defend criminal defendants in appeals, in federal and state levels for civil justice panels. I have represented families in family court who are facing termination of parental rights. I'm also a community mediator volunteer.
Great. Thank you. Sean, over to you.
Thank you so much for asking this. You know, I entered this race because I believe when I was looking at everyone else, there's no one that has the type of high-level experience that I have in international business. I was the CEO of a large foreign company with offices all around the world. I was also the head of a 450-person international law firm. I was a journalist. I was a faculty member of school. I was a dean of a UN university. So I think the biggest problem that we have these days is we have a lot of people that are great at pontification. And if you look at everyone's websites, I can only see two people's website that actually has substance in the actual website, not just catchphrases. So I think what we need to get back to is we need to get back to the old days where we really have people joining this race that are policy wonks, people that will really get into the actual policy. So take a look at my website, and I think you will see the policies that we put forward, and we actually put forward answers, what these policies will look like, not just a tag frame like "you're for affordable housing." And all I see is two people doing that. And I'll always mention other people's names that are doing that, and I'll mention this later. He just smiled. I won't say it so soon, but I think what people are looking for and what we need to get back to is people with this type of experience and pragmatism, to move this party back to the middle and not move this party as it's moving to the far uber-left. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lee, over to you. Qualifications and public service accomplishments.
Hi. Thank you, Ben. So for most of my adult life, I've worked in the nonprofit sphere. I spearheaded a 9/11 recovery effort down here in Lower Manhattan with a law firm, Sullivan &amp; Cromwell. I've worked on numerous, worked with numerous nonprofits down here in Lower Manhattan. Affi CDF is one of them, and they worked on affordable housing issues, tenant rights issues. So I've been doing that. In addition, I founded a nonprofit called Nomi Network, and we work with workforce development. I was one of the founding board members, and we have offices in Cambodia and India. We grew the budget. I was able to help them grow the budget significantly in the last 10 years, where they've expanded their offices to include India, and now they have another office in Texas. In addition, I was also on the Board of Mercy First, one of the largest human service agency, and we were able to work through the challenging times of COVID. So yes, I have the experiences in the financial field, you know, with my background in helping these nonprofits grow. So yeah, I think that's the reason why I'm a better candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gigi Lee, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. So I got into government because I am a social worker and an organizer. And then I joined the community board, Local Community Board 3. I served on the community board for 10 years, four of which as community board chair, and most recently, as chief of staff for the current council member. And also, a brand-new perspective is I'm also a new mom to a six-month-old, right? So I, over my time, have handled thousands of constituent cases. I'm one of the only people here in this race who has actually built affordable housing, who has tackled resiliency since Superstorm Sandy hit Lower Manhattan. And policy-wise, as an advocate and policy wonk, as Sean mentioned, I was on the mayor's task force to design and implement UPK NYC, triple the size of the Summer Youth Employment Program, and also bring lots of much-needed social services to low-income communities of color throughout New York City. So I think that I have a track record of broad-based coalition building and both experience in inside and outside of government. That makes me the ideal candidate for this position.
Thank you. Jenny Lo.
Well, thank you for having me. Good morning, everyone. I'm a lifelong resident of Lower Manhattan and spent more than 30 years as a public servant and community advocate fighting for Lower Manhattan. I am an immigrant, learned English in New York City public schools while I worked in a coffee shop on the weekends and evenings in Chinatown. Since then, I've served as a nonprofit leader, a director of community engagement at the city council. And I have been elected as a district leader for 25 years. In my private sector career, I made small business loans, making loans to women and minority-owned businesses, and spent 10 years working as a grant officer, making millions of dollars in charitable contributions to nonprofit organizations in Manhattan. We need experience and strong leadership to help us guide our recovery from this pandemic. I'm ready to hit the ground running, working with the city council, fighting for real recovery from this pandemic and building a stronger future for our communities. I am committed as a lifelong resident here and have a demonstrated track record that earned me endorsements from all three congressional members in this district: Congressmember Nidia Velazquez, Carolyn Maloney, and Jerry Natla, and many major union endorsements, including UFT, HTC 32BJ, DC 37.
Thank you. Maude Marin, over to you.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Well, I will say that I am a public defender for over 20 years, so I have represented clients when they are in need and they need strong representation. I'm also a mom of four kids, and those two separate skill sets will both come in handy in a lot of different aspects of the job of the city council person. But Ben, to answer your question very specifically about accomplishments, I have been elected to the Community Education Council for District 2, which is one of the largest community school districts in New York City and which overlaps with City Council District 1. As part of that, when I was elected to the president of that council, I led a team of educators and of parents and of stakeholders who didn't agree with each other, who had very different ideas about how to tackle a very tough issue, which is integration, and how to make our schools more integrated. And we were able to put together a very smart and successful grant program, which grant proposal, which secured $2.6 million in funding from the State Department of Education. Being able to work with folks who have very different ideas and being able to pull together a team of people that can come together despite different ideas and produce something successful to move a project forward is something that I think our city council will need in this upcoming city council, because we are going to see, most certainly, a very wide spectrum of ideological beliefs in the next city council. And so I think that skill set is something that I will be able to bring.
Thank you. All right, everybody's doing great on timing here. Thanks. Christopher Marte, over to you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Ben, for hosting this forum. My name is Christopher Marte. I was born and raised in Lower Manhattan and lived here my whole life. When we look at the next city council and we look at the responsibilities of the next city council person, it comes to four points. The first and the most important is land use decision. Out of all the candidates, I've worked with residents throughout this district to face some of these mega-development deals that are happening in our district, whether it's the Two Bridges Development with four luxury towers coming in the backyard of match property, a mega-jail proposed by the mayor in the heart of Chinatown, destroying our historic district in the Seaport, or the potential upzoning of Soho and NoHo. I've worked with community members on the ground, not only to push back on these plans, but to offer an alternative to those developments. And that's what we need in the city council. We got to make sure that our community has an active voice in the city council. In addition, when it comes to budgeting, before being in politics, I worked at IBM's Retirement Fund, where I managed a $1.2 billion budget. So I know how to make hard decisions, but also with the perspective of long-term investment. When it comes to constituent services, as a current state committee member of the 65th Assembly District, I get constituent calls almost every single day, whether it's about eviction, small business help, or even traffic and sanitation. I'm usually there, right on the corner, making sure that we repair a lot of the damages that have been done. And finally, when it comes to legislation, I started proposing some white papers that focus some of the key issues that we hear on the street every single day, whether it's sanitation.
I'm going to stop you there. You're going to get a chance, I think, to get back to that in the next round, because the question is related to what you just said, but that's time for this one. Denny Salas, over to you on your qualifications and public service accomplishments.
Thank you, Ben. First, Happy Earth Day, everybody, all right? And also, thank you, MNN, and thank you for my fellow candidates for joining today. So I've done quite a bit in my political career, just in regular career. Started off as a stockbroker, but then I left to work for President Obama's grassroots organization, Organizer for America, where we fought to pressure lawmakers around Obamacare and financial reform. After that, I worked on Capitol Hill, where I actually did research for the Obamacare bill. After that, I actually was a political consultant for Democratic members of Congress, helping to elect and reelect House and Senate members in New York, including Eliot Engel and Carolyn McCarthy. After that, I became a lobbyist for small business manufacturing, where I traveled to 42 states across our country, talking to business owners, taking the concerns back to Capitol Hill, and then trying to effect change in order to help our small business manufacturing with this industry, supporting 700,000 American jobs across our country. And one of the bills that we successfully passed a year after I left, actually, called BATSa, the Business Activity Tax Simplification Act, which actually made it easier for businesses to transport their goods across state lines. Now, for the last five years, I worked for a school in the Bronx, where I created the school's first-ever music band. I created a summer school program for the first time ever. I created a robotics coding and engineering program for these students. This is a student body that's 80% lives below the poverty line, 100% black and brown, and their assessment is ranked with top 11% in the state's wealthiest school district.
Thank you. And Tiffany, over to you. Tiffany Wimbush.
Hi. Thanks for having me today, last but not least, of course.
Just for the first round.
Thanks for that. My lived experiences make me the perfect candidate to represent Lower Manhattan on the New York City Council. My lived experiences as a woman, as a black woman, as a mother, as someone who relocated to New York City and has committed to making this my home for the past 15-plus years, I am committed for serving really as a voice for everyone. I found myself in many spaces throughout life. I come from a family of helpers, and many would say that my family was low-income, but that did not stop us from sharing what we had with others, whether it was food, whether it was educating our community about voter registration, things that were on the ballot, or even driving them to the voting poll on the day of. I come from a family of helpers, and that continued throughout my public service. I've been a member for almost 20 years of a 100-plus-year-old public service organization, where most of my work focused on mentoring high school girls who were first-generation headed into college. Additionally, from there, I've also served on the community board, Community Board 1, where I was a part of the Affordable Housing Committee. We identified apartments in the area that were supposed to give residents preferential rent because of the simple fact that their landlord, the developer, had received tax cuts. And this led to a number of lawsuits, several that are still ongoing, where residents have decided to stand up for themselves and receive overpayment or return of overpayment that they've done. Additionally, right during COVID-19, I rallied some local families within my community, and I got them to donate their pandemic EBT funds to our local green market. And we then took fresh vegetables to residents at Alfred Smith houses on a biweekly basis. I've also worked with some other local families in my community to sort of organization that focuses on inclusive communities, no matter your background.
All right. Okay, so we're moving on to our next round here. We're going to start this round with Jenny Lo and go in the same order. This is a pretty open-ended question, as many are in this debate, and it's important for voters to just get a feel for how you're thinking about key issues. The question here is: Name two specific pressing district issues and specific things as a city council member you would pursue, do, try to pass, try to get a budget allocation for, specific actions you would take to try to address those specific district needs. Two specific district needs and things you would do to try to address them as a city council member. And I'll caveat this again by saying, I know there's many more than two issues facing every city council district, but what would you highlight as two major ones? Go ahead, Jenny.
So my top priority as a council member is defend affordable housing, address food insecurity, and find real investment in our public schools. Specifically, since you're asking for two, the two that I would talk about is affordable housing and food insecurity. You know, we have an affordable housing crisis in the city, and that's not no secret. In our district, there are over 6,300 units of NYCHA housing in District 1, Lower Manhattan. They are in disrepair. The residents are working in horrible condition. I am strongly opposed to the blueprint that is presented to them today. I want to help the residents and make sure that they have a voice at the table and veto power to plans that they are not in favor of. I am opposed to ratting any privatization effort. I'm working with Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez, who is proposing a $70 billion federal funding for public housing, and all which, quite a few of those billion dollars will be coming to NYCHA. That is what I will be doing, working in affordable housing, but specifically for NYCHA. Food insecurity, I spent the whole, but the whole pandemic helping to deliver food, and we deliver close to 1 million free meals to those in need, and that effort continues. And that is a model that I will talk about as I get to the city council, perhaps later on today.
Thank you. Jenny, just quickly, you mentioned trying to fight for federal funds for NYCHA, but is there anything at the city level that you would support to bring revenue to NYCHA developments?
Absolutely. We, the city, while we are facing a fiscal crisis, but I will be open to working with the council, finding, and the administration, finding additional revenue sources. The city has allocated funding for NYCHA, and I will fight for those and fight to increase those, because it is not the way our residents should be living today.
Maude Marin, two pressing district issues and specific things you'd do to try to address them if elected to the city council. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'll say that I agree with Jenny, and she identified important issues that are crucial to our district, but I will discuss two others. One is something that I don't think should be an issue when we take office, but I'm afraid that it may be, which is getting our schools fully and completely reopened. Not only do kids need our schools to be open, but families need our schools to be opened, and it is interrelated to our economy, to our small businesses, to employment numbers, because we have seen so many women leave the workforce because of the pressures of children being out of school. And we know we've lost over a third of small businesses in the city. There is a direct link between those employment numbers and those small business closures and what's going on with our schools. So I would continue to do what I've been doing, but do it as a city council person in trying to make sure that we bring reasonable public health decision-making to the decisions about opening our schools. The other thing I will say is that we have to, we 100% have to stop the mayor's jail proposed for downtown, and that is linked with reforming the homeless policy that we have downtown in Lower Manhattan. The criminal justice reforms and the homeless policy go hand in hand, and both have been really disastrous in terms of Lower Manhattan. We absolutely cannot afford, as a city, to spend the budgeted $8.7 billion, but most likely a higher number of our capital budget on building new jails, which will not have enough jail beds for what New York has historically needed in terms of criminal justice.
And quickly, Maude, why do you think, to the extent that schools are open now, why do you think more parents haven't re-enrolled their children in in-person schooling with what's available as-is?
Because schools are not really open, Ben. My four children are all in school today. It's the fifth time since March of 2020 that all five of my kids have been in school on the same day. My high school student, who's in ninth grade, has been to school for less than 20 days in the entire year, and when he does go into the classroom, he opens up a laptop and gets Zoom in a room, because there's no teacher in the classroom with him. That's not open school, no matter what the mayor says about a gold standard. It's absolutely unacceptable. It's not open, and a lot of parents reject it because it's not good enough.
Thank you. Christopher Marte, two pressing district needs and what you do about them.
I believe the two biggest pressing needs are affordable housing and fighting climate change. And so when it comes to affordable housing, it's just not building new affordable housing, which we can do through conversion, whether it's using office space that will not be used the same, or hotel space, and immediately creating permanent, deeply affordable housing for the most vulnerable. And second, we can actually put, we could rezone areas like Chinatown, the Lower East Side, and pass a community-based land use policy called the Chinatown Working Group Plan, which will end speculation, or at least limit it, to limit the displacement that we've been seeing throughout this district. When it comes to climate change, we do have FEMA funds sitting there that needs to be used to protect our waterfronts. And so I'm going to be active in getting everyone to the table, community boards, scientists, consultants, to make sure that we have a plan that is supported by the community, but that's going to protect us from the next Hurricane Sandy. I remember when Hurricane Sandy hit us nine years ago, there was water levels in certain buildings to the second floor. And nine years later, we haven't done enough to protect us. The only part of our district that's protected is Battery Park City. We need to do a lot more and faster, and I'll bring that energy and, you know, the will to make sure that we get it done.
When you say "do a lot more," what do you want done on the protection from climate change front? What's a specific project or type of project that you want to pursue?
So there's areas where we have funding, between Montgomery Street and the Two Bridges, and right near Smith Houses, we have the funding to implement comprehensive protection, but we haven't done it yet. There's areas that has no funding, like the Seaport and the Financial District, so it's advocating to make sure that we get both federal, state, and city money to come together to start imagining how we protect that part of the district. But then there's things we can do.
I'm going to have to stop you there. Thank you, though. Denny, over to you. Two pressing district issues and what you do about them.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. As Sean alluded to earlier, I am one of the only one or two candidates in this race that actually released a detailed policy platform to deal with our issues. I created the American Dream Plan, which interconnects housing, education, and the economy. But if there's two issues, and we know they're all interconnected, that I'll focus on is housing, really the economy right now. Housing, we have a 700,000 affordable housing shortfall in New York. In a recent poll just said that 78% of New Yorkers support more affordable housing across the city. So what I want to do is remove exclusionary zoning policies and support rezoning issues like NoHo and SoHo, to not only create more affordable housing, so you have families and working-class families to actually achieve their American dream here in New York, but also middle-class New Yorkers that often get left behind. So I'm going to create a new Mitchell Lama program, so middle-class New Yorkers can actually stay here, raise their families, and not get pushed out to the burbs. Now, when it comes to the economy, a lot of our small businesses care about is creating the environment for them to succeed, and I do that by something creating superblocks. Superblocks basically does is we move cars off our streets into the major thoroughways and allows for us to basically take control of the streets through pedestrianizing it and also just create increase in foot, excuse me, increase in foot activity that will lead to increased business activity. And that's something that we've seen in Barcelona over the last five years, and it'll be immediate. And there will be immediate impact to help our small businesses across our city.
Seems like some, some car owners and car drivers might not like that. What do you say to them?
Well, only 2 million out of 8 million New Yorkers actually own cars. And we have 3 million free parking spaces in New York. You're right, there is going to be some winners and losers when it comes to this super blocks plan. But I'll tell you right now, the immediate benefits are incredible. What we've seen with five years of data is increased business activity, community health benefits, where people are outside meeting their neighbors and physical health. Some of these streets begin to turn into actual great space.
Thank you. Tiffany Winbush, over to you.
Thank you. So small business owners are the backbone of our community. I know many of us here can probably pinpoint several small business owners or small businesses that we, you know, frequently go to. Um, so I want to make sure that our small businesses are still here on the other side of COVID. The Small Business Job Survival Act is something that the next city council can actually put a vote to. The current city council has not done that, but the next city council can do it. That will ensure that small businesses have access to a 10-year lease that will make sure that they have an opportunity to negotiate with their landlords and then also make sure that they are not on the hook for any additional property taxes that their landlords may have. We need to ensure that this is something that's voted on within city council and something that's put into place as soon as possible. Additionally, affordable housing, I know that there are, is a sticker shock in New York City. I know it, many people know it. There are many things that we can do to ensure that we have affordable and low market rate affordable housing. We need to focus on transitioning some of our vacant hotels. That's something that we can focus on immediately. Not only ensure that people within the district have affordable housing, but also make sure that our unhoused are able to utilize that for housing as well. And I know that Denny also mentioned Mitchell Lama. There are many middle-class families who want to stay in New York City, who want to make this their, this their home forever, but it's just too expensive. We need to ensure that those programs are robust so that our middle class can stay here as well and they can be a part of the fabric of New York City for years to come.
Thank you. Susan Damplo, over to you.
Thank you, Ben. I would agree with Tiffany that we need to address affordability and several of my other colleagues have mentioned this. Uh, it's not just about those that are currently sheltered, but the unsheltered of our neighbors. I have sisters and brothers who are sleeping in a tent on the corner of my block until recently, when the Department of Sanitation came with shovels and their belongings were removed so that the local deli that was opening up could go in and renovate. Um, we have a crisis, Ben. You've talked about this, it was before the pandemic, it's been exacerbated by the pandemic. And our sisters and brothers who are unsheltered in this city need our help. We need to change the shelter system. Those people obviously would prefer to sleep in a tent because they cannot, they cannot sleep with their loved ones. They're on cots, they have no door to close, they have no privacy. We can do better, we will do better. I will do better on the city council to see that our shelter system is reformed to offer sustainable housing. Also, I think we have to understand that this is, that our issues with NYPD reform and other problems with our city agencies not serving us well is a symptom. It's not the cause. We have a strong mayoral system and it's about time we gave up the, the weak city council system that, that goes in hand with that. We need to, uh, we need to confirm the commissioners of every agency. There are over 60 agencies in this city and only a handful are confirmed by, by the city council. If, when I am in office, we are going to confirm all the commissioners and, and you know that we will have a higher quality.
That's an interesting proposal on expanding that. Just quickly, Susan, I didn't hear a lot of solutions on the wholeness this front. What's one policy or policy change that you would pursue?
So I'm, I alone am not going to solve any problems. And in a democracy, Ben, you know, that's not possible. We will form a coalition with the experts, the community organizations, the residents themselves and the business sector to talk about this issue. But obviously we've seen it successfully with veterans programs in other jurisdictions. And we will, we will investigate the models and adopt what works best for the greatest city in this country.
Sean Hayes, two pressing district issues and what you do about them. Go ahead.
I think, I think number one, I, I was, I was brought up lower middle class. And, um, I recall when my, my father told me when I was about 12 years old, he said, you know, a good job for you, Sean, will be a garbage man because they have a good union. It's a good job. Now they don't have an actual, actual union. My father came from poverty. My father came from Ireland with very little, he had no high school education. How can we get people to get like me? I'm not trying to be arrogant here, I'm a successful person. And I, and I did that through great education. Sports was a very big, um, motivating factor from me, but I didn't get it from my, from my parents. They just didn't have the background that they were able to, to do that. So I, I think the number one thing is education. It's education for people getting out of jail. And it's also education and internship programs and a mentorship program like the Peace Corps for New York City. And I have this on my actual website, laid out what the plan is. The plan would pay 80% of the median income, be a two-year program. A parolees convicts can also join this program. Your criminal record would be sealed if you successfully finish that, that program in that two-year period. Um, and we would place, uh, trainees and nonprofits, uh, trades, banks. And I'm already doing this personally. I have my own mentorship program that I'm testing out, taking people that do get out of jail. Most of my camp people are people that got out of jail. Uh, one of the major leaders I have has been in jail for 32 years, just got out. And placing them in jobs that they would never think of. And I've already organized that, I'd organize that with law firms, banks and stuff. And I think we need to do this citywide, a peace corps for New York.
Thank you. Uh, Susan Lee, over to you on two pressing district issues.
Yes, thank you. Um, I agree with all my fellow candidates on the issues that they propose. Um, my, my biggest pressing issue right now is, um, the economy. When, when we walk around the district, we have a lot of empty storefronts. We need to start investing in the local economy, making sure that, um, small businesses are thriving. Um, like Tiffany said, small businesses are the backbone and the fabric of our community. What I propose is, um, to have property tax freeze, um, for the assessment this year and 2022. I also want to, um, the subsidies that are coming in from the federal government that's coming through New York State will go to mom and pop small business landlords ahead of hedge fund and real estate developers. I think that, um, you know, when you look at data, a lot of the small businesses employ locals from the, you know, from New York City. So with that, we can really kickstart, um, employment in the city. Um, another issue I think, you know, and we all touched upon it, is affordable housing. Um, you know, not, it's not affordable. What's affordable, I think is subjective. I don't think, um, you know, back when I was working at Affy, we would call it low-income housing and that term fell out of favor. So I really do believe we need affordable housing. The current 2080, um, mandatory inclusion, um, is not enough. I do think we need to bump it up. Um, at, at what level, I'm not sure. I, I think it will take the council to decide. Um, but I think that at the current level, 80, 20, definitely not enough.
Thank you. And, and you're referring there to 80% of the development market rate and 20% under affordability caps. And I'm not going to ask you a follow-up on that because we are going to talk about housing in the next round of questions. So we'll get back to that.
Thanks, Ben.
And you mentioned the solution on small business. Okay, uh, Gigi Lee, over to you for the, uh, last but not least on this round. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. So like many of the other candidates, um, housing and affordable housing is certainly one of, uh, the top two priorities here. Um, I have a very specific policy, um, and that is reforming the ULR process, right? It's the Uniform Land Use Review Process. City council, the city council, uh, district in which it's, this development is in, the city council member has the final vote. But really it is taking a step back and having this city look at planning from a very comprehensive, uh, approach, right? We have to take a look at this from a housing justice perspective. And what I mean by that is, um, are we looking at secondary displacement? Are we looking at how neighboring infrastructure is impacted? Are we looking at access to public transportation? We can't just continue doing spot zonings without looking at an overall impact to the neighbors and to the neighboring communities and how will it impact the residents that have made this neighborhood great for all these years. And my second priority is COVID recovery and that's really broad. But two things in particular is how we can support small businesses so they can come back, right? We need to streamline, um, and make, make sure that these businesses are not being held accountable uh, by four different agencies that have four different sets of standards, you know, who are all coming on the same day. So we, and we also need to make sure that the money that's coming down from the federal government actually gets in their hands. And then I think the second part of that, of recovery is, um, access to mental health services and preserving the social safety net, which is something that I've been working on, uh, for over a decade.
And just quickly, you mentioned the idea of comprehensive planning. There's a proposal that's been introduced in the city councils, I'm sure you're aware, to implement a version of that. Do you support that? Uh, and if, if not, very briefly, why not?
Um, I do, I think it's a good starting point for discussion, but I think it can go more in depth.
Okay, uh, let's go on to more specifics about housing and development. This district is at the center of a number of projects. Some of them have been mentioned already in this debate. There are different proposals, there are rezonings, there are, um, longstanding controversial projects in the district and some new ones. But what I, I want to ask each of you to speak to is sort of your lens around development and housing. And, and, uh, to play a little bit of devil's advocate, at least, uh, for a number of you who have already mentioned sort of the, the need for there not to be overdevelopment in the district. Uh, if you can address how you, uh, propose, how you think about bringing new housing to the district, making it more affordable, uh, are there, are there areas of the district that could be home to more housing? How do you think about the balance between market rate and affordable housing? Uh, and I'm probably going to ask some follow-ups here to, you know, to push this question of, does this district need to do, you know, quote unquote, its part in adding housing to a city that by all metrics does not build, uh, enough housing for, for people to, for the population growth it's seen and the job growth it's seen? All right, so let's get started this round with Tiffany. Uh, Tiffany Winbush, please talk about your overall lens, philosophy around development and housing and affordability in the district. If you want to cite specific projects, that's always great and welcome. If you want to cite specific policies that you like and don't like, that's also welcome. But how are you thinking about these issues for the district and its future? Go ahead.
So like many here, I will reconfirm my commitment to ensuring that we have affordable housing within our district. It is sorely needed, not only in the district, but across New York City as a whole. I'll also say that I am not anti-development. I realize in New York City that development is going to happen. It is a city that changes time after time. So I am not anti-development. What I will say is that if there are rules and regulations in place according to development, that developers need to make sure that they are following those rules. One in particular place that I'll mention is, um, in the historic district of the Seaport. At 250 Water Street currently at the moment, they are, there is a proposal to build two towers. And I would consider them mega towers that are in very close vicinity to two schools. Now, is it an issue because they're close to two schools? No, it is an issue that they are in a historic district and they have certain rules and regulations they are supposed to follow. And unfortunately, this developer is really pushing not to follow. So there was a slight victory in that particular instance and I am hoping that we can continue to push that developer to build when they're supposed to build. I've advocated for converting our, um, empty hotels into housing, affordable housing for those people who currently call the district home and also for our unhoused neighbors. That's something that we can do right now, immediately. There are examples in San Francisco, there are examples in Texas of cities who are committing to buying these vacant hotels and refurbishing them and converting them to people who need it most. So we need to begin by making sure that our communities are inclusive, that everyone feels welcome. I, um, am not an advocate of saying that someone's not welcomed in our neighborhood because they don't necessarily look like the, uh, current makeup of, of our neighborhood. And hopefully more affordable housing will ensure the, that we increase diversity across our district as well.
Thank you. Tiffany, are you sure that those hotels won't be needed again for tourist activity in the relatively near to medium term?
Well, I am so hopeful that tourism comes back to New York City sooner rather than later. And of course, I know that the city announced a big tourism push just, um, recently. So it is a major focus. Um, but I will have to say, in particular, um, in Lower Manhattan and Financial District, there were an abundance of hotels that had been built over the past several years. I think there is an opportunity to take some of those vacant hotels and rehab them into affordable housing. And I don't think that the tourism industry is going to be impacted by doing that.
Thank you. Susan Damplo, your overall frame on housing and development, uh, especially as it relates to, uh, the district. Go ahead.
Yes, Ben, thank you. Um, I've lived in the district exclusively for over a decade. And I am running to create a people-centered democracy, not a concrete-centered democracy. We have our priorities completely messed up, in my opinion. We need to focus on the residents of this district and their needs before we talk about our visitors or anyone else. We are overheating, we don't have enough green space, we need more green space, not less. We know, we need swimming pools in our district, we need more basketball courts, we need more skate parks for our teenagers. Our children, the next generation, need to get outside and recreate right where they live. We have spaces for affordable housing. I would propose taking Governor's Island and those barracks, those were affordable houses. They were affordable to those serving our country. And I would convert those to affordable housing exclusively if we must. Because we all know that 20% figure is arbitrary. The need for affordable housing in this city is 43% of our residents. And we are perpetuating that problem by not acknowledging it and, and meeting it. We need to have 100% affordable housing for the next period to even come close to meeting the needs of affordability in this city.
Thank you. Sean Hayes, over to you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with everyone, everyone else here, but I think what we also need to focus on is, is property tax. About 35% of my rent goes towards property tax. I don't own the, the, the rent I'm in, I'm actually friends with the owner. And I looked at her property tax bill, it's about 35% of my rent. A large part of the problem is our taxes are too high. So I have a program for that. I think anyone making under $70,000, that's a veteran, should not pay property tax. And also if you're disabled. Now, I'm not the type of person that's for giving away money. Think about this, nonprofits that own vacant land do not pay property tax on that vacant land. They don't pay property tax at all. If they have vacant land, it's for investment, tax them on it. Wealthy universities with large endowments are now going into the business of also renting apartments. Tax them on that. And we figured out with an economist that we can have a revenue neutral program if we did tax NYU Columbia's property and also tax vacant lots and, um, implemented, uh, from NGOs. And we can cap the property tax at 1.9%. And seniors making under 70,000 and disabled people making under 70,000 would pay no property tax. So I think that's the type of creative solutions that, that, that we should be looking into.
And Sean, is there anywhere in the district you think could be home to more housing development, new housing development?
Yeah, I, I think first of all, we, we have a huge problem with our public housing. I, I went there and it's a mess. It's a complete, and it's shameful. I, I spent time in, in South Korea and poor housing in South Korea created by the government is better than what we have here. It's a, it's shameful. So I think what, what we actually need to do is, is these hotels, we need to have a study on it. I don't know how much is going to come back. I know W Hotel, uh, is closed right now and it has no plans to reopen.
Gotcha. Hotel, hotel.
Hotels, I think is a very good option.
All right, thank you. Uh, Susan Lee, uh, your general framework as you're thinking about housing and development in the district? Any specifics you can mention on policies, projects, areas of the district that might be, uh, welcome home for more housing? Go ahead.
Thanks, Ben, for repeating the question. Um, so what, like I said before, the 80, 20 inclusionary, mandatory inclusionary zoning is not enough. Um, when you look at certain developments, um, like the one at One Manhattan Square, they got rid of the Pathmark. Um, I remember growing up, that was our, um, supermarket. And they got rid of the Pathmark, now there is no supermarket in the area. They have to, some people have to walk to Trader Joe's or a fine and fair, which I've heard from my neighbors that it's really not affordable. So I think that when you look at development, we need to look at it from a holistic perspective. You know, I'm from Hong Kong and they have, um, plenty of public housing where in the development, they have supermarkets, they have daycare centers, they have, um, medical facilities, medical offices. I think we need to plan in a way that serves the community. So I think that that would be one way, um, of tackling it. But also, you know, I was working down here, um, during nine 11 and we suffered. and we suffered, um, you know, immensely in economics. A lot of the businesses moved out. A lot of these buildings were converted from commercial space to homes. Now Financial District is a thriving neighborhood. And I think that we can do that also with some of the commercial spaces that are vacant right now is to turn them over to housing.
And, and so you're indicating a little bit, correct me if I'm wrong, that you think the mandatory inclusionary housing policy is generally a good policy, but the balance needs to be shifted a bit?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and that for folks who are unfamiliar, I encourage reading up on it. It's a little bit technical, but it's very important related to how affordable housing and market rate housing coincide in the, in the city and whether, um, you know, the city has the right balance on that and how new development of market rate housing helps subsidize some affordable housing. But there's lots of questions around the balance as we, as we just got at there. All right, Gigi Lee, over to you.
Thank you. So building off of the, how I answered the first question, I would be guided on land use decisions to look at it from a very comprehensive approach. And so what does that mean? First, I think it means fair share, right? Council District One does have a lot of affordable housing options, but they're all primarily located in Community Board Three on the east side of the district, right? And so we need to look at the rest of the district. It's one of the reasons that I support moving forward the conversation on rezoning of, a potential rezoning for NoHo SoHo, right? It is a neighborhood that is, has great schools, has great access to public transportation. And really from a just, a housing justice lens, um, could really be a game changer for any family or child that can get to move into that neighborhood and benefit from all of the amenities that the existing neighbors get. Secondly, I think, um, you know, I was very instrumental in moving forward Essex Crossing, which is now 55% affordable in perpetuity. And that was done by putting, bringing together a broad-based coalition and thinking about planning and small businesses and sort of every overall aspect of a development. And that's the kind of model that I think we should replicate down here in Lower Manhattan and citywide. And lastly, I think we need to look at broader and deeper subsidies and broader income bands when we talk about who gets housing and what is affordable.
Okay, thank you. Jenny Lo, over to you for your general lens on housing and affordability, especially development in the district and anywhere you, you could foresee supporting new housing in the district perhaps? Go ahead.
So my guiding principle on development is the two key words, responsible development. Responsible development means that, does not mean a developer liked what they built with One Manhattan Square, drop in and say, here's the plan, this is what we want, take it. We, that's not, that is the opposite of responsible development. Responsible development means we need to make sure that all the stakeholders at the table have a transparent process from planning to deliberation to execution. Stakeholder includes residents of the neighborhood, elected officials, experts, labor unions, whose workers will be building those development should it go through. We need to make sure that we have comprehensive planning. It's not just dropping a, 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 a piece of property or a building in the neighborhood. We need to make sure that there are services. Susan alerted to what they do in Hong Kong, so I'm not going to repeat that. It is a model that we need to, that I will support when I get to the city council. We need to make sure that community buys into that plan and that there is inclusion of the process and diversity in that process. And I would also want to make sure that we do not accept the false choice of affordable housing and local hire that is not prevailing wage paying. And that is, we've been presented that many, many times. And that's why I say that the labor unions need to be at the table from the beginning. And we do not accept what is being presented to us that is done in the dark of the night and drop in for us.
Are there any areas of the district you think that could be a welcome spots for new housing?
There are many this areas in, in, in our neighborhood that can be in, welcome, that are welcome spots for development. I mean, it is very highly debated in the Two Bridges area. I was in the, that is being planned with more mega towers that looks like One Manhattan Square, One Manhattan Square. I was in the room with the Speaker of the City Council, Corey Johnson's, making a call to DCP commissioners, telling them that we will sue them if they don't stop the process.
Okay, thank you. But that's a, that's an area that could be home to the right housing under your, under your.
Correct, with low community support.
Okay, Maude, over to you on this topic.
Yes, okay, well, my lens on development is that we need reasonable development. Development is part of the economic engine of our city and it is also part of the solution to affordable housing. And when it comes to affordable housing, we need to protect what we have. Battery Park City was built as an affordable housing community, but it's in jeopardy right now because of sort of the, the structure of Battery Park City that's unique to that neighborhood and to that area. And so we need to work with our existing communities to preserve the affordable housing that we have, but we also need to build more. Um, and so that means we do have to have sensible rezoning policies. I am very committed to protecting historic districts. I think the South Street Seaport and, and SoHo, NoHo are areas where we should absolutely protect, you know, historic neighborhoods. But we can also bring our zoning into compliance with reality, right? SoHo is designated for light manufacturing. So if someone wants to bring a retail operation, they have to, to advertise for, to make sure that there's no light manufacturing concern that would want to go in there first. We need to update and bring into reality what actually exists in a neighborhood while making sure that our landmarks protections are in place so that we really protect our neighborhoods. I will, I will disagree with some of my fellow candidates about hotel conversions. I don't think it's a good idea in order to stimulate the kind of tourism we need to jumpstart New York City economy. We need to have hotels at all different price points. We can't just have luxury hotels, we need to have economy hotels as well. We need to bring in all of the tourists that we have lost.
Thank you. Just to clarify, are you, and again, the SoHo, NoHo rezoning is not necessary for a big bulk of, of this district, but is that, are you saying you're opposed to that, that proposed rezoning?
I'm not, I'm not in favor of what Bill de Blasio is trying to do right now in large part because I think he's cut out the community concerns and, and he's done that across the board, but he's certainly done that in the SoHo, NoHo rezoning. But I think a reasonable rezoning plan that actually listened to the community could have some upside and could have some benefit.
All right, thank you. Christopher Marte, you, uh, early on in this debate, you, you mentioned several projects. You sort of gave a little bit of a, of a preview into your lens on this topic, so let's take it a little further. And I guess specifically, you can certainly answer however you like, but you know, I'm also curious to know if you think there is room for, for housing development in this district, where, what could it look like? Do you think there are any merits to using mandatory inclusionary housing to sort of leverage the, the private market to subsidize affordable housing? Go ahead.
So first on that, on, on a citywide level, I think we should do away with MIH and add affordable housing overlay. So any new development either creates affordable housing or funds go to a, a fund solely to create new affordable housing throughout the city. When it comes to building new affordable housing in the district, we've seen really bad deals. And currently, we're seeing a really bad development deal with this potential SoHo, NoHo rezoning. Uh, I know the mayor has used this false narrative that we need to upzone that neighborhood to create new affordable housing. But I actually held a virtual town hall with neighbors to go line by line through that plan. And one thing we found was that if a developer could show financial hardship, they actually don't have to build any new affordable housing. So why are we always giving away developers when we deeply need it in our community? There are a few, there are a few lots in that neighborhood that we can build affordable housing. One is Two Howard Street, right now it's a federal parking law. In last month's Community Board Two meeting, Senator Charles Schumer said he's going to work to make sure that we can reconvert that into housing. There's two water tunnel sites that are empty lots that we can build senior affordable housing and they're next to grocery stores, uh, next to parks. And also throughout the district, we can find other slots, like there's an empty lot on Rivington between Eldridge and Allen. There are many lots that we can use because we can't wait decades to have the community fight for more affordable housing. We need a leader in the city council that already knows the sites, that knows the land use process and the current development deals in place now to move forward with these new units.
All right, uh, we're going to round out this round with Denny Salas. Denny, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Ben. Look, I have the most detailed housing platform at anybody in this race. I've already talked about our expanding affordable housing through the MIH process. So then we can actually create socio-economically diverse neighborhoods across the city. Because the one thing we don't want to do is continue to perpetuate poverty or having these rich enclaves all across the city. We want to create these socio-economically diverse neighborhoods so families like mine can have an opportunity to achieve their American dream. I wrote up an op-ed for Gotham Gazette, thank you, Ben, about this particular thing. I grew up in poverty. My parents had to break the law and lie about our dress so we can attend good schools. What was the outcome of that? My older sister, PhD, a William Ford Prize Scholar. My younger sister just finished her master's in economics and now is going towards a PhD. My older brother, he's a long-haul truck driver who speaks three languages and knows how to code. That wouldn't have been happening and that wouldn't happen if we didn't have to break the law in order to attend good schools. That's what housing can do if you actually create socio-economically diverse neighborhoods across the city. Now, Chris talks about trying to fight for affordable housing, but he's consistently fought against it. He's fought against the 700 affordable housing units that we built in Lower East Side. He's fought against senior LGBTQ affordable housing in my own neighborhood in Alita. And now he's fighting against affordable housing in NoHo and SoHo. You can't say you stand for actually providing opportunity for working class and middle-class New Yorkers when you consistently be fighting against housing over and over and over again. I've never seen anything about what you stand for. So where do you actually create affordable housing?
All right, that's the end of your time anyway, and we'll give Chris a chance to respond. I do think Chris got a little bit at that in his, in his prior answer. But Christopher, why don't you take a little more time to respond there, maybe 30 seconds or so?
Yeah, uh, his first point, the Lower East Side. I'm the only candidate that's fully supportive of this plan called the Chinatown Working Group Plan that creates new affordable housing, but also limits displacement. I think Denny has to understand, you can't just over, you can't, you just can't overdevelop a neighborhood without the fear of displacing low-income residents here. And we've seen that whether it's the eviction of 85-buried tenants and then number of other issues throughout our district where people have been facing massive gentrification and displacement. So it's making sure that we keep people in their homes protected, safe, but then also building new ones.
So, um, this is actually, I'm going to insert sort of a quicker round here. What I'd like to know from everybody, and, and this is just about 30-second answer from each, and I'll, and I'll call on you accordingly, starting with Susan Lee. But the question is, were you in the district throughout last year in the worst of the pandemic? And what's one thing you did to help your community during that time, if you were in the district during that time?
Yes, I was. I was in the district during the entire time. I, um, after the recovery, well, during when COVID vaccination was rolled out, I walked around Columbus Park in Chinatown to help seniors make appointments for their vaccination because there was no in-language capability and also they didn't have technological capability. So I had to create a lot of dummy emails.
Interesting, okay. Thank you. That, that, and that's the answer, that's the type of answer I'm looking for in this round, is, is those two quick kind of answers. Gigi Lee?
Yes, so I was in the district the whole time. I was actually pregnant and at home. And what I did was I actually founded a food pantry in Lower Manhattan. It now serves citywide. We've served over $300 million worth of fresh fruits and vegetables with a focus on Lower Manhattan, but also citywide. And I also helped lots of people navigate the unemployment process to make sure that they can actually continue paying their rent.
Thank you. Jenny Lo?
I have no place to go but here, this is home for me. I, uh, early in March of 2020, I called for, uh, uh, along with my co-district leader in Lower, in Chinatown area, called for, and the city, state, and federal elected officials to designate Chinatown as an economic distress zone to get the benefits of what that zone comes for. That helps small property owners, small businesses and workers and the like. Throughout the pandemic, I helped coordinate, deliver free meals to those in need and it's still happening Monday to Friday and helping them close to a million meals now. When the vaccination happened, I helped close to 1,000 people register to register for vaccines.
Thank you. Maude?
Hi, yeah, Ben, I've been here the entire time. I've been here with my kids and with my husband. And we've been trying to figure out and make remote schooling and hybrid schooling work. One of the things I did and have been doing and continue to do is band with other parents to try to get our schools open. And I will say, we notched two very successful victories. We got the two-case closure rule overturned, or we got rid of it. It wasn't based in sound public health science. And we also got an additional opt-in period for parents. We've had over 25,000 parents opt back in, even though, as I said before, there are some real issues with school as it exists.
Gotcha, thank you. Christopher?
Yeah, so I've worked with nonprofits throughout the district, like Taste of Tribeca, to fund small businesses, especially small restaurants that were suffering, to get food to low-income families. I helped raise $15,000 to get PPE for home attendance. And I helped women-owned businesses to connect with community banks to apply for PPP loans and government grants.
And Denny?
Yes, I created a fundraiser to make sure that the students had equipment to continue with remote learning. And I also created a turkey drive to feed 200 families during Thanksgiving in Lower East Side. But now that I have some time left, I'm going to address displacement issue. So it's a simple supply and demand issue, Chris. In order to actually stop displacement is to build more to make sure you can lower rent so people can stay in apartments.
Thank you. I think, I think voters and viewers can see that some of the difference in, in approach between you two on the housing issue. All right, Tiffany, on whether you were in the district and what you've done if you were to help your community?
Yep, I was in the district. My husband and I were raising two very energetic children in a two-bedroom apartment, also focusing on remote learning. So at the start of the pandemic, all New York City public school families received pandemic EBT funds. Essentially, you've got about $420 per child. There were many families within our school who didn't necessarily need those funds and were doing nothing with them. So I put in a call to them, saw if they could donate it. And we worked with our local green market where we provided fresh vegetables to the Smith Street houses with those funds so that they did not go unused and so that we helped the local business at the green market and also families who needed that food.
Okay, thank you. And Susan Damplo?
Thank you, Ben. First, I donated financially to the food banks charities. I donated blood. I'm a community mediator, as I mentioned. I volunteered to settle disputes among neighbors. Primarily, the disputes that I was dealing with were noise complaints. And I speak Spanish. My husband is a political refugee. He fled communist Cuba when he was a little boy. And so I conducted some of that work in Spanish, translating for one side while the other side was not a Spanish speaker. Lastly, as a former state administrative law judge, I worked for the State Liquor Authority. I saw the bar tops language in the regulations back in June. When the in positivity rate increased for young people, I contacted the Department of Health at the state, at the state level and Jay Varma, and I told them that the bar tops should be taken out. The regulations were changed shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you. Sean Hayes, were you in the district throughout and what'd you do for your community?
Yes, I, I was here the, the, the whole time. The thing that I did is I, I started with a former gang called The Black Spades. And we formed together a mentorship program. And they place mentorship, basically young people getting out of jail, almost all of them get out of jail. And they place them into my hands and I place them into mentorship programs. And we, we presently now placed, I think, 13 people into permanent jobs. And we're proud of that. It's a small program right now and I want to expand that citywide. And I have people working in banks, law firms, I actually hit up a lot of my law firm friends.
All right, folks, we are now into our lightning round, so we're, we're getting shorter, shorter and shorter with our answers here. This is our lightning round of, of short answer, yes, no questions. I'm going to call your name and ask you for, for that short answer each time. It's going to go fairly rapidly here for the next five or so minutes. And then after that, we'll move into some closing statements. All right, so for the first answers for the lightning round, we will start with Maude. The question is, name one transit improvement. The question is, name one transit improvement for the districts. Some, something related to how people get around that you would try to implement if elected to the city council. One transit improvement for the district. Maude?
Sure, I think we need a big and expensive one, which is making our subways wheelchair accessible. And I think the capital budget that we would spend on borough-based jails would be much better spent to improve our transit system.
Christopher?
We need busways and bike lanes that are connected and protected.
Denny?
My super block plan.
Tiffany?
We need more express buses and we need to make sure that our local ferries accept Metro cards.
Susan Damplo?
I would collect unspent Metro cards and give the funds on those to those who can't afford a ride.
Sean?
Denny's super block plan.
Okay, Susan Lee?
More protected bike lanes.
Gigi Lee?
More protected bike lanes, but also really looking at making sure all sidewalks have curb cuts.
And Jenny?
Balanced planning of the transit, but with public transit must be finding ways to, not finding way, making them accessible for people with disability or mobility issue and change the, remove the transit desert with buses that reach to all parts of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Tiffany, starting this round with you. Yes or no on the proposed Governor's Island rezoning? Tiffany?
No.
Okay, Susan Damplo?
No.
Sean?
Yes, with a caveat. Okay.
Thank you. Susan Lee?
No.
Gigi?
No.
Jenny?
No.
Maude?
No.
Christopher?
No.
Denny?
Not as currently designed, no.
All right, starting this round with Gigi. Let's say, do you support NICA infill development? That's building new housing of any kind, could be 100% affordable perhaps. But do you support building new housing on what is typically referred to as underutilized NICA land? Gigi?
With the right plan, I'm open to that, yes.
Jenny?
Only affordable housing kept with residents approval and kept in public hands.
Maude?
Yes.
Christopher?
I know.
Denny?
Yes.
Tiffany?
No.
Susan? Damplo, sorry.
I agree with Jenny with the residents buy-in.
Sean?
Yes.
Yes.
And Susan Lee?
No.
Okay, starting next round with Christopher. Do you support the idea of pedestrianizing the financial district? And if yes, the downtown alliance proposal or go further? Christopher?
Yes, we have to go further. I think it's a great start, but I think Friday should be pedestrianized.
All right, Denny?
Yes, my super blocks plan does it.
All right, Tiffany?
Yes, and let's expand it to other neighborhoods.
And I'm sorry, the yes and is go further than the downtown alliance plan, I believe, is a fairly, you know, kind of smaller area around, in, around Wall Street. And the question is, you know, support that and go further? Tiffany?
Yes, go further. We can always go further.
Okay, Susan Damplo?
Ben, I, I say yes, I can walk faster than drive through Five Dino anyway.
All right, Sean?
Yes, and also, also go further.
Susan Lee?
Yes, and go further.
All right, Gigi?
Yes, and go further.
Jenny?
Yes, and go further with full community support.
Ah, Maude?
Yes, and I can't say go further unless I know what that plan is.
Okay, how long have you lived in the city council district? Let's start with Sean.
I had an office here. I've been going back and forth for Asia for 18 years. So I've been here every four weeks. I fly back every four weeks, for two weeks for the last 15 years. And my office has been here for 15 years.
Got it.
Tough answer for me. It's not 15 years. Let's say 15 years.
Understood. We appreciate that nuance. Rarely in the lightning round do we like nuance, but we'll take it there. All right, Susan Lee?
Three and a half years, but I grew up in Council District Two.
Okay, Gigi?
So also not straightforward because there's time in between college, et cetera. But I would say about 15 to 20 years.
Jenny?
Forty-five years all my life, never left.
I've lived downtown since after college and I've lived in the district for the last 20 years.
Christopher?
Except for college, I lived here my whole life.
Denny?
Five and a half years and my wife and I will stay here and raise your kids here.
Tiffany?
Over 15 years. It's the only New York City neighborhood I've ever lived in.
And Susan Damplo?
I've lived here since 2010.
Okay, there's a city council tradition called member deference on land use matters where basically it's expected that the larger city council will defer to the local member, thus member deference on land use projects. Do you believe in a blanket member deference project, member deference policy for land use projects at the city council? Let's start with Denny.
Yes, I support member deference.
Tiffany?
Yes, a member should know their district in and out.
Susan Damplo?
Not, I do not believe it should be a blanket decision, no.
Sean?
No.
Susan Lee?
Yes.
Gigi?
I support member deference, but not a blanket one, no.
Jenny?
Member deference because the member knows and should have listened to the constituents.
Thank you. Maude?
Yes.
And Christopher?
I support member deference, but it shouldn't be blanket, especially when it's multi-district rezoning.
The jail plan as it's currently constituted, keep it, change it, scrap it all together. Those are the three choices. Keep it, change it, scrap it all together. For the jail plan, let's start with Jenny.
Scrap it.
Maude?
Scrap it entirely.
Christopher?
Scrap it, and I'm the only candidate that's organized the community to help the lawsuit and want to stop.
Scrap it.
Tiffany?
Scrap it.
Susan Damplo?
Change it. Loved ones need access to their loved ones who are detained.
Sean?
Scrap it.
And Susan Lee?
Scrap it.
Gigi?
Scrap it.
Last couple. Name one city council issue committee you would love to chair if possible. Let's start with Maude.
Education.
I knew it. Christopher? Sorry?
Land use.
Thank you. Denny?
Education.
Tiffany?
Education. I'm a mom of two. It's important to me.
All right, Susan, Damplo?
Of sanitation.
Sean?
Education.
Susan Lee?
Education.
Gigi?
Land use.
And Jenny?
Youth Committee.
A lot of education there. Unfortunately, we didn't do a long education discussion in this debate, but hopefully in others you have that and folks can check out your platforms, hopefully on your websites and such. All right, last two in the lightning round, and then we're moving to closing statements. You, this race will be on the ballot, as I mentioned in the introduction, alongside a mayoral race and many others in the Democratic primary for mayor as of today, when we're talking here in mid-ish to late April. Who's your favorite candidate in the Democratic mayoral primary? Denny?
Kathy Garcia.
Tiffany?
We need to elect the next woman.
Susan Damplo?
I like Catherine Garcia. I'm continuing to study the candidates.
Sean?
We haven't made up yet, but we're actually leading right now to Eric Adams.
Susan Lee?
Ray Maguire.
Gigi?
Andrew Yang.
Jenny?
I'm undecided.
Decided. Maude?
I would say that I'm torn as a first choice between Catherine Garcia and Eric Adams.
Okay, and luckily we do have ranked choice voting. Christopher?
Right now, I'm leaning between Diane Morales and Scott Strangler.
All right, and lastly, as we just said, there's ranked choice voting at play, including in this race. So assuming you're going to rank yourself first, who's your number two ranked candidate in this primary? Maude?
Susan Lee.
Christopher?
No second choice.
Denny?
Look, I would say this, and I'll be honest, there's two candidates that I actually got to know on a personal basis here at a wonderful dinner with Sean Hayes. And I also had a great discussion, was collecting signatures with Susan Lee. They're both fantastic candidates, very serious.
Tiffany?
I can't tell you which one's second.
We need more women on our city councils, so I am supporting another woman, the right woman.
All right, Susan Damplo?
I haven't decided, but it's a pleasure to explore their backgrounds.
Sean?
I sent an email out to everyone and I only received an answer from one person who I actually met, so it's Denny.
Susan Lee?
My second choice would be Maude because we're very similar on our education issues.
Gigi?
I would love to keep this seat with a woman of color.
And Jenny?
I'm still evaluating.
Jenny, copping out on us both times. All right, very good. Let's go to closing statements. We are going to start closing statements with Susan Damplo. Just as we began the event, we'll go in that order again, now that we've given lots of people a chance to go first different times. One minute closing statements. Susan Damplo, tell voters why you should be their number one ranked candidate come June. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you, MNN and the League of Women Voters and my colleagues and the listeners for this tremendous opportunity. I'm running for city council member in District One in the Democratic primary, and I am asking for your vote on June 22nd. For the past four years, our community has been through chaos, darkness, and division. And I am running to bring us to a brighter tomorrow. I'm a seasoned attorney and a former state administrative law judge. I will use those skills to enact change and to see that your tax dollars are being used wisely. I will form coalitions with community organizations, with residents, and with the business sector to improve the quality of life in this district, to promote systematic fairness for all, and of course, to reimagine our local economy. Go to damplofer.com, damplofercouncil.com to learn more. My motto, the campaign's motto, is there's unity in community. Join us.
Sean?
Thank you for having me here. I'm Sean Hayes. And our motto is pragmatic, pragmatic solutions through experience, experienced leadership. And I think that's what I actually bring to this. I felt when I came back in May full-time here, I felt that I was called to do this. I looked around and I looked at the city council does not have enough experienced business people. And I think it needs more experienced business people. And I think I'm the only one in this race that has high-level international business experience, high-level education experience, and also high-level experience working with companies that are working all throughout the world. And I can see we're losing competition. We're losing the competitiveness in our youth. And we're not capturing a very large population of people getting out of jail that have talent. And we're just throwing them back into the actual system. So I think education will bring us out of all of these problems. And spending of money, I know all of us were talking about spending, spending, spending. But I want to get everyone out of poverty. I don't want people to have to live in public housing like I did. And I think that's what makes me different here. It's my high-level business experience.
Susan Lee?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, MNN and League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates for the forum today. I am running because we are faced with challenges, not only from the pandemic, but also challenges from the economy. I will bring common sense solutions to a lot of the issues that we have bear to the forefront. Education has always been really important to me. My parents believe education is the best, the most important investment of your life. So I will work to improve our education system. But also, at the same time, I know that small businesses are the backbone and the fabric of our community. And I will work very hard to ensure that mom and pop landlords can still continue to keep their properties throughout this pandemic and get relief from the government. Thank you.
Thank you. Gigi?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, my fellow candidates and MNN. Look, I got into this as a social worker and seeing the frustration of families at a time of need, seeing how government can help them. So whether it is as a social worker organizer, whether it's being on the community board, whether it's a chief of staff for a council member. My goal and my focus has always been on equity and access. We need that more than ever. What you'll get out of me being your next council member is a focus and drive towards equity and access. My top three priorities are affordable housing, COVID recovery, and protecting the social safety net. And I have the track record and have done that in this community for over a decade. And I hope I have your support for Council District One, first ranked choice vote for Gigi Lee.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you, Ben. You did a great job moderating nine people. And thank you, MNN, for this opportunity to talk with folks about my vision and why I'm running for city council in Lower Manhattan. I'm a lifelong advocate and leader in nonprofit space for Lower Manhattan. With my professional career in the private sector, bringing resources from the biggest bank into our community. I have experience with working, leading nonprofit organization and now working as a director of administrative services at the city council. I'm going to bring, use this experience that I have garnered and combine that with my passion and commitment to the community to help our city defend affordable housing, work with folks to help our working family recover from this pandemic, address food insecurity, and bring real investment into the public schools. And I'm ready to hit the ground running, so please visit my website, jennylow.myc. Thank you.
Thank you. Maude?
Yes, well, thank you, Ben, for hosting this debate and to MNN and to all my fellow candidates for the thoughtful answers. As I, as I mentioned in one of my answers, this is the fifth time this year that I've had all my kids in school. So I feel fortunate that I haven't been interrupted once during a debate, which marks a milestone for me and Zoom meetings. I will say the one thing that I wish we had had the opportunity to discuss more that we did not discuss right now is public safety. Because it's something I hear again and again from constituents, from future constituents, I hope, as I walk around in our neighborhoods. If we think about the shape our city was in eight years ago when Bill de Blasio became mayor and the shape that our city is in now, we're headed in the wrong direction. The fear is palpable from people on the street that New York City is going back to a time when our city was less safe, less clean, and a less reassuring place to be. And I think we need to have a city councilperson, and I am hoping to be that city councilperson who will tackle these hard issues and have these hard conversations. I have a history of speaking up and taking on hard issues. And I would be grateful for everyone's first choice vote to be able to do that next year.
Thank you. Christopher?
Hi, thank you, Ben, for hosting this forum. I know it was really difficult with so many people, but I'm honored to be here. We're facing a road, a fork in the road in our community, right? We could either have politics that is the same that we've had for the past 12 years, where members of our community didn't have a voice in the land use process, in the budgeting process, or even what happens in their street corner when it comes to traffic and sanitation. But I've been there to work with people to make sure that their voices are uplifted. We've been able to create a coalition of neighbors. I've been able to unite Chinese restaurant workers with parents in Soho to environmentalists on the Lower East Side. These are the people that are behind my campaign. And this is why I asked viewers today to support us. Because if we're going to come out of this, this recovery for everyone, it has to be a just recovery. And I'm willing to fight for you on day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Denny?
Thank you, Ben, MNN, and the rest of the candidates in this race. I'm often reminded of a Robert Kennedy quote. Some men see things as they are and ask why. I dream of things that never were and ask why not? This year's election is the most consequential since the Great Depression. And for too long, our city has suffered from low expectations from elected officials. And we've become accustomed to it. During today's debate, you heard who has a real plan and who does not. And if you believe that New York City has better days ahead and that our students can achieve their dreams and that our small businesses can succeed and provide higher wages, then I ask for your vote on June 22nd. Visit dennysalas.com, look up my American Dream Plan, and you'll see that is the most detailed policy platform in this race. Thank you for having me, and I hope everybody has a wonderful day.
Thank you. And Tiffany, you get to have the last word, well, before I have the last word, you get the last word among candidates. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure being here with everyone today. When I'm elected to represent District One on the New York City Council, I'll bring progress and positive change for all New Yorkers. While I have roots in Louisiana, after 15 years, New York City is definitely my home. It's where I became a partner to my husband, where I became a mother to my daughter and son, and where I've made lifelong friends. I come from a family of helpers. We helped our neighbors register to vote.